Good evening. Today is Monday, May 5th, 2025, 5:30 PM. And today we'll start off with the item agenda A, presentation by the city, excuse me, City of Chief of Staff, Brian McCain.
Thank you, sir. PD, they want to remind everybody that May is Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. The Pueblo Police Department reminds drivers to obey all traffic laws and to look twice to save a life. Friday, May 9th is the Mayor's Youth Council Cleanup on Friday from 9:00 AM till 11:00 PM. Mayor's Youth Council students from across District 60 are organizing a community cleanup around City Park and along the Arkansas River Trail. Meet at the City Park Pool Parking Lot. Trash grabbers, trash bags, and gloves will be provided. Anyone and everyone is welcome to volunteer. Kara Track and Field. Kara Track and Field is a great summer activity for youth five to sixteen years old. They'll complete in four to five regional track meets on Saturday with practice on Tuesday and Thursday morning for conditioning and training. For more information or to register, visit pueblo.us/parks or call 719-553-2790. Tennis lessons for both youth and adults is available through Pueblo Parks and Rec at City Park Tennis Complex at 3:30 South City Park Avenue. There are four sessions available. Sign up now for Pee-wee ages four through six. Futures starts ages seven through ten, aces ages eleven through eighteen, or adult skills and drills ages sixteen and older. For more information, go to pueblo.us/tennis or call 719-553-2790. And that's my report, and I could turn it over to the Romeros if you don't have any questions.
I think we're good. How you doing, Gil?
Thank you, Chair Gomez and members of City Council. This will be our last presentation for you. Thank you for all of your attention during this 120-day session. We're in the last three days of the session. There's still a number of bills outstanding, ninety-six bills are still on the calendar. We've been following a bill that's in the Senate now, but there are a number of bills that potentially have impact to the city that we'll continue to follow until the very last day. Just to give you a sense of where they're at, there was a concern that, well, there was considerable tension between the governor's office and members of his own party regarding a couple of bills that were passed and sent to him, and there was a potential for an override of his veto. That never happened on Senate Bill 86, the social media accountability bill. The governor objected to, on free speech and privacy grounds, arguing the bill forced platforms to police users without due process. The Senator overwrote the governor's veto, but the House never took it up. Senate Bill 77, the Public Records Timeline Extension Bill, this was vetoed by Governor Polis for weakening transparency and creating inconsistent timelines. This override vote was laid over and never taken. Just to give you an update on where we're at with the bills that we continue to follow. As you know, House Bill 1147, which is, we believe, on the governor's desk, although we've looked at his website, and there's still no indication that he's actually got it so that the clock will start ticking. He has thirty days to sign that bill. On behalf of the city, we've asked those that voted against the bill to contact the governor's office to encourage and urge him to veto that bill. We've also asked other entities like the Chiefs of Police, other municipalities, to have their constituents either email or call into the governor's office to encourage him to veto that bill. The big bills that are still out there that we'll see what happens with is the one bill, Senate Bill 5, the Union Security Vote repeal. As you know, this measure is a priority for unions, but was objected to by business interests. The governor had signaled he won't sign the measure if it eliminates the second vote, the Union Security Vote. And that bill will pass third reading in the House and be sent to the governor, and it will have eliminated that second vote, so there's the potential for a veto on that bill. The other bill that we've been following on behalf of the city is the Workers' Comp Bill. This expands injured workers' ability to choose their own doctor rather than from their employer's list. It's opposed by local governments, employers, employers, and the state Workers' Comp Division over cost concerns. And finally, there's the big social policy issue that's being debated right now in the Senate. I've been following it now for the last couple of hours, is the Transgender Protections Bill of Rights. Very controversial bill. I was listening to the debate just a few minutes ago. One of those provisions would allow a child twelve years old to change their name without permission from their parents. So that bill will continue through the night. We anticipated before the session ended that there would be some efforts to challenge the Tabers Bill of Rights, either a lawsuit or a ballot measure. There was also a proposal to retain 10% of the refunds that were, you know, which would amount to about $600 or $700 million next year. All those measures will not be brought before voters, or will there be a ballot measure? And finally, you know, the one thing that we're very concerned about is special session. They anticipate that the cuts from the federal government might amount to a billion dollars, and potentially the legislature may be called back in September or October. One last bill that I wanted to bring to your attention that we were concerned about, just because we've always tried to protect the local control issues for the city. This was Senate, House Bill 1169. It was tagged "Yes in God's," it was tagged "Yes in God's Backyard." It would have allowed religious institutions to build housing on their land, whether it is zoned for residential construction or not. That bill is in trouble in the Senate, and we understand probably doesn't have the votes to get out, and has been opposed by the Colorado Municipal League pretty significantly. So that's our report for tonight. We'll continue to stay on top of the municipal court bill. And our last presentation to the city will be in person, and I believe that'll be next week. But we thank you for all the work and attention to a number of bills that impacted the city. And we, you know, we were successful, at least in terms of minimizing the budget cuts that took place with the $1.2 billion shortfall. Thank you.
Okay, any questions or comments, my counsel? I think Counselor Mastry.
Well, hopefully, this will all be over soon for this year. We actually have something coming up here. Our next category is Proposition 123, Funding. I wanted to go back to last year's bills that were passed. Didn't we have something that actually went against, we had to give up our home rule status in order? It was Planning and Zoning, I believe, Bill, in order to receive the Proposition 123 Funding. Wasn't there something involved with that that I recall? Do you recall that, Gil?
I don't, Counselor Mastry. We'll check on that. We'll, Mastry, we'll. I do know that there were some restrictions on 123, but let me, we'll follow up.
Yeah, it was more of a, it was a planning, it was more of a allowing for, oh, the the ADUs, yes, correct, the ADUs on properties. And if, it affected our home rule status, but if we didn't do it, or if it didn't go through, they were like dangling the 123 in front of us.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know, has the city availed itself of those funds or that are the ADUs? Structure, do you know?
Yeah, because, you know, we sit here and we say, well, religious organizations can't put housing on their property. But yet, we, there was a bill passed where the single-family residents now, I mean, if there's a space for a box in a single-family neighborhood, they can now erect that box and use it as a rental unit. And under that proposed bill, which passed.
Right.
Correct?
Yeah, it did pass.
Yes, and it took away our home rule authority to actually do anything about it locally, was also my understanding.
Yeah, and that was the concern for the Municipal League on House Bill 1169, which, you know, the city may or may be okay with a particular, you know, church or religious institution on building it, but it still should be the authority of the city, you know, to look at it with respect to its zoning laws. And so that's why I think this bill, we don't think it's going to get out of the Senate on second reading today, tonight, or tomorrow.
Yeah, no, I'm just looking at, you know, the hypocrisy in a lot of the bills that are being passed.
I agree.
Okay, any other comments, questions? I think we're through, Mr. Romero. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez.
Next up, item agenda B, Propositions 123 Funding. Melissa Cook, the Housing Administrator, fifteen-minute presentation. Hello, Melissa.
Good evening, counsel. Thank you for having us here tonight. We will pull up the presentation and get started. Okay, so I am here tonight as a response to Counselor Martinez's request during the February meeting, the council retreat, to go over Proposition 123. Briefly, if you don't mind, Counselor Mastry, just an answer to your questions. There were some very large land use bills that were introduced. I think that's what you're referring to. There was the ADU bill and a few other planning bills that were about very specific categories that were passed. The land use bill did not pass, and there was a lot of folks who were, a lot of municipalities that were against that because it talked about transit-heavy corridors, you know, it talked about density, and really tried to make all areas of the state extremely, you know, high-density, high-rise apartment complexes. So I think that's what you're referring to. I do not remember there being anything that was actually tied to Proposition 123, but there's been conversations about that.
It was kind of like they were dangling of the carrot. Like, if we didn't, if we didn't agree to these bills, then we would less likely, the funding of proposition, you know, that these funds coming to our community is what I remember. And I could be wrong, you know, that was a year ago, but that's how I, how I remember it. That was part of like a dangling of the carrot.
Yeah, well, we'll talk. There are some requirements with Proposition 123, and we will go through that this evening. So I want to talk about Proposition 123, just an overview of it. Also, before we actually get started, we're going to talk about affordable housing and what is affordable housing. I think it's important that we set the playing field so that we all know exactly what we're talking about. Even when people ask me, what is affordable housing? It's a really hard question to answer because it depends on who's asking and what funding source we're using. So we're going to talk about that briefly. We're going to talk about the Pueblo and Proposition 123, what we've used, what we've already started utilizing, and what we think we have opportunities for in the future. And then at the end, we're actually going to talk about some barriers with Proposition 123 and how we plan to address those. So as I mentioned, the definition of affordable housing, it varies. It depends on whether you're talking about state or federal. All federal funding sources and state funding sources have different requirements. Some voter-approved measures have very prescriptive definitions of what affordable housing is. But generally, affordable housing talks about the occupants or the household that is occupying a unit and having a household income at or below a certain level, which is attributed to the area median income. So there's 80%, 60%, 50% of the area median income, or the AMI. So generally, affordable housing is defined in that, in those terms. So for owner-occupied or homeownership, generally, most funding sources have it anywhere between 80% and 120% of the area median income. It depends on what type of homeownership you're looking at, if it's townhomes or single-family. But that is generally where that falls. And for rental, generally, again, it's at or below 60% of the AMI, or the area median income. So I think traditionally, when we talk about affordable housing or low-income housing, whatever term we want to use, we think of these big high-rises, we think of Cabrini-Green, we think of, you know, these projects, or what have been historically known as projects, the public housing that was built in the 50s. Here's our own version of that here in Pueblo, the Sangre de Cristo Apartments, that, of course, the Housing Authority is knocking down and rebuilding. And really, it's just changed so much. All of these projects, affordable housing developments, they have to fall within our own building codes, so they have to fall within those residential building codes. The guidelines for building have become a lot more stringent, so you have required ADA accessibility and just a lot of other amenities that I think the 1950s-style low-income housing didn't have. So here in town, here's a few very recent ones that are low-income housing or affordable housing that have been done. So of course, the whole redevelopment of the Sangre de Cristo Apartments, this is a photo here, I think, of the Uplands Townhomes. Most recently, we've had feel and iron, so those upper levels, there's, I believe, 28 units of affordable housing up there. And really, there's affordable housing peppered all over this city that you may not realize. There's Oakshire Trails, which is a 70-ish unit senior complex over on Pueblo's east side, or Santa Fe Crossing, right across the street from the Art Center. All of those are affordable housing. They have rent restrictions in them, but they don't look like your traditional affordable housing. And so, as from the Proposition 123 standpoint, because that's what we're here talking about tonight, what does affordable housing mean? So if we are a family of three, affordable housing, if it's rental, means that we are at or below 60% of the area median income. Here in Pueblo, for a family of three, that is an income of $55,000, just over $55,000 annually. So when we are talking about some of these affordable housing communities, a term that I don't use a lot because it's not really accepted in the industry, but is workforce housing, that's what we're talking about. We're talking about families that, you know, work, that pay rent. This same family in their two-bedroom apartment, they're paying $1,377 a month in rent. That includes utilities, but that is the maximum amount with utilities that that family can be charged. What's different about this, too, about affordable housing, is it's not based on your income. There are programs, don't get me wrong, that base your rent amount on your income. But for the most part, what we're talking about, it is just this two-bedroom unit can never have a family in it that makes more than 60% of the AMI, and you can never charge over this amount of rent. And so that is, that's what that family of three would be paying if they were renting.
Can you, the AMI stands for?
Area median income, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Now, if we're talking about the same family with a homeownership opportunity for Proposition 123, they cap that at 80% of the area median income. So same family of three, if they were looking, if we're looking at developing homeownerships, homeownership properties, that is a $73,000 household annually, and the maximum price that they could pay for that is $276,000. And so really, those are the levels with Proposition 123 that we're talking about, is that amount and under. And so one thing that's happening here in town, just a final look at what is affordable housing, is the Compass Point Apartments. This is something that is slated to come to Pueblo's east side. It's a $72 million project. And these are the actual renderings from the 2022 presentation that they presented here to try to apply for some of the city's private activity bond cap, which they did receive. And what is, so the Compass Point Apartments, this actual apartment complex that is looking to come here that received funding, these are the units that they're looking at. So the cheapest apartment monthly is $402 a month. That's a one-bedroom at the lowest area median income that's slated for those lowest. But the averages here, you can see for a one-bedroom are 922, two-bedroom is 1100, three-bedroom is 1200, four-bedroom is 1400. So again, I just want to reiterate that when we talk about workforce, I'm sorry, when we talk about affordable housing, we're really talking, for the most part, about workforce housing. It's important because these affordable housing apartment complexes, they can't put together a funding stack without leaning more towards a lot of these higher rents. They can't pay back their permanent debt if they don't have that. So let's talk about Proposition 123. So Proposition 123 was a voter-approved ballot initiative that was approved by the people of Colorado in November of 2022. It sets aside 1/10 of 1% of excess Tabor dollars for housing activities. There's three primary housing activities. There's rental, homeownership, and homelessness response activities. In order to be eligible, the municipality, i.e. the city of Pueblo, has to opt in to receive these funds within their jurisdiction. So I will come back to that, what that means, but what I want to do is go pretty in-depth on the actual funding itself. So again, 1/10 of 1% comes in from the Colorado Department of Revenue. It goes to two primary places. CHAFA, which is the end user, they get 60% of that fund. It's actually to OEDIT, which CHAFA manages it for OEDIT. And then the other 40% goes to DOLA, the Department of Local Affairs. And so you have these two pots of funds. In general, CHAFA manages the rental side of the house, and DOLA manages the homeownership side of the house. And then each of them have three main programs, which I'm going to go very in-depth, so this slide has a lot, and just bear with me, please. So CHAFA, the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority, who has the rental side of the house, they have three main programs themselves. So the first one is land banking. This is for rental only. It is available only for local tribes and governments, but local governments and tribal governments to apply. You can get up to a $5 million grant or forgivable loan to purchase property for future development. Ironically, they are looking for shovel-ready projects, which somewhat goes against the land banking concept, but that is what we're working with, and that's what we're looking at. They have the equity component, which a lot more folks can actually apply. It's for-profit, nonprofit, local governments. You can get equity up to $15 million for the acquisition or construction, or both, of rental affordable housing projects. And then concessionary debt, so just low-interest rates for the hard debt on a project. Again, it has much more open applications, a lot more entities can apply. And this is generally used for gap finance, so when you are building an affordable housing complex and you can't quite make your funding stack work, you come in for this concessionary debt, get the, you know, low 1% interest rate, and you're able to then get that, those additional funds in order to make the project work. On the Division of Local Affairs side of the house, which consists of the Division of Housing and Division of Local Governments, they have three primary projects, homelessness response services, again, open applications for city municipalities, for-profits, nonprofits. They offer eviction prevention, and as well as hopelessness response, which is your shelter operations, rapid rehousing. These are the dollars that I've stood here before you and talked about we are going to need for the Pueblo Rescue, or for the Pueblo Shelter, that the city will be applying for funds for operations. There is the Local Planning Capacity Grant, which the city has already been awarded. We'll talk about that a little bit more. It's only for local governments, and it's to help plan to implement Proposition 123. And then lastly, they have affordable homeownership. So they offer gap funding up to $70,000 per door for new affordable homeownership developments. So one agency here in town that's talked about taking advantage of this would be Neighbor Works Southern Colorado that was looking at their Pike's Peak Park. I know that in their funding, original funding stack, they had dollars attributed from this pot of funds for that project, but for these dollars, you know, may not be able to actually make that project work. Okay, so how does, go ahead, Counselor Gomez.
I'm going to forget if I don't throw this in. Does the low-income designation, is the low-income designation, is that replaced by the workforce designation, or are they still low-income and then workforce? And then, see, I'm getting that, is that going to replace that title? Are we going to utilize low-income housing anymore, or is it going to always be workforce housing?
So any affordable housing complex that's being built generally has a combination of everything. So the Compass Point, I didn't include this in the slide, but I would be happy to share this out. They have what's called a unit mix. So they have three one-bedrooms at 30% of the area median income. So that means that that's capped at that lowest rent, that $402. They'll have 10 capped at the 50% of the area median income rent, whatever that happens to be. But in order to make these pencil, generally, they lean more to have a lot more, 50 and 60% of the area median income, because those result in higher rents. And so in order for them to support the debt that they have to take out in order to build these projects, you have way more of the 50, 60% family households, those are your higher income earners, rather than your 30% of the area median income. In fact, it's very rare to have more than, I would say, 5% or 10% of those lower 30% and 40% of the area median income units designated.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so how does it all work? So first, the local government sets the baseline. The local government comes in and says, we are going to commit to increasing our affordable housing. The first step to that is setting a baseline. So the city of Pueblo had to figure out how many units, according to the definition in Proposition 123, do we have that meet that criteria? How many affordable housing units? And so we set that baseline. The legislation is very prescriptive of what that is. It's based on the American Community Survey, which is part of, of course, the US Census. And in order to count units as being affordable, we look at building permits, how many new building permits were created. Once we get that baseline number, then we have to agree in the legislation that we will increase the number of those affordable housing units by 3% per year over three years, so 9% in total. In addition, a requirement to this is we do have to say that as a municipality, we will do one thing, and that is we will provide an expedited review of all affordable housing developments. So Counselor Mastry, this actually talks about your point earlier, as far as changing policies and procedures, you know, at the local level, we are required, if we want to continue to participate in Proposition 123 by January 1st, 2027, to have changed procedures that say that we will be able to review all affordable housing applications within 90 days. Now, that is the grant that we received. We're starting that work now to see what that looks like. But that, there are some requirements, you know, attached to this.
Disregard that.
Yeah. And so as far as the baseline for the city of Pueblo, and this is where it gets a little bit difficult for the city, the baseline of affordable housing units that they said we already have, like, absolutely affordable units, was 13,403. That is almost a third of our entire housing stock, according to the definitions in Proposition 123, say that is affordable. So you do the math, 3% per year over three years. In order to stay compliant with Proposition 123, we have to build 1,206 new affordable housing units by January 1st, 2027. So we know that's not going to happen. We're going to talk about that, about how we can cure this. So with the funding, all that our opt-in does is opens the door to funding. It allows people to walk through that door, both the city and the nonprofits, to walk through that door to be able to apply for funding. If we did not make that commitment, there's no opportunity. These nonprofits or ourselves could not apply for those ones. A common misconception of this funding source is that municipalities are entitled to an allocation of funding, or that it's going to just go out to these individual jurisdictions. That's not true at all. There's no applications, you know, your municipality or your jurisdiction may not receive funding. And so what happens if we don't reach the goal, which this is very real for the city of Pueblo? It simply closes the door for funding for one year. And so we know that right now, every fourth year, we are likely not going to be eligible for funding unless we can find a way to fix what's written in the legislation. There are no clawbacks of previous funding, so the funding that we're receiving right now, they're not going to come in and ask us to repay. And the good news is that the homelessness services are still eligible on that off-year. So residents of Pueblo County can still, or the city of Pueblo can still apply for the rental assistance program, for instance, or we can still apply for operations grants for the shelter. So there is some silver lining. And then after that, we will simply create a new commitment. We will redo our baseline and have a new commitment for 2028 to 2030. Already in the city, we have received quite a bit of Proposition 123 funding. So you can see that we have some nonprofits. We have a modular manufacturer that receives assistance. City of Pueblo received $96,000 for the local capacity planning grant. City of Pueblo also received $100,000 for a minor repair program that will be coming to council in the coming weeks. And then there were $289,000 just recently of homelessness providers, a variety of homelessness providers that received grants. In addition, there are a few projects that are coming up here in the future, or at least we know applications that happen. So the equity applications just happened. These are for large-scale affordable housing developments, and I know that we wrote two letters of support. And in addition, the city is actively looking for partnerships with nonprofits throughout the city to apply for that land banking grant that we discussed earlier. So it's up to $5 million. It's actually not as competitive as you might think, considering the amount of funds. So we're actively seeking that, that application. So we're actively seeking that, that application will be later this year. So we've already started conversations with some of our local partners. All right, let's talk about our baseline because this is where we're really gonna need help from this council. We know that Pueblo's three-year goal is unachievable. This goes for both the city and the county. I mean, the county knows this as well. We'll never meet the goals with the legislation written as is. To be very clear, this is not a result of the city or city staff or the nonprofit partners in our community not doing their part. It's really just that Proposition 123 was written as a catch-all, that it's supposed to be a one-size-fits-all for every community throughout the state, and it just doesn't work that way. So in general, I mean, we know that the City of Pueblo has a lower average income. That leads to a lower average rent, which led to the all of, you know, almost a third of our units being considered those affordable housing units, which resulted in that higher baseline.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As, so I was talking about AMI, Melissa. Where are we comparatively with the other communities across the state? Are, do they, are their housing stock also thirty percent that, that's defined as, you know, low-income housing? Do you know?
Yeah, every community has a mix. Every community deals with the same things that we're dealing with. Because really, it's led by the funding source and what it is that you're, what you're trying to build. As far as the definition that you're talking about, it gets really complex. In the, in the legislation for Proposition 123, you can actually select what you consider affordable. But if we were to say that affordable housing was much less, then the only units that we, or the affordability is much less. So let's say that we said, we're only want to look at under twenty percent AMI and below. Then we would have to build all of those units in order to be counted as a unit as a twenty percent AMI and below. So it gets really complex in this. There is some flexibility in determining your baseline. In looking at the baseline that Pueblo determined, obviously, this was before me. I think we did a good job. I think it's just a really unattainable goal. So you can move that somewhat, but it makes the units that you're actually creating not able to be counted. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I guess my, so then a follow-up is, are there any, because a third of our housing stock seems high. Are there any other communities in the state that have a, like, high percentage of their housing stock be identified as low income?
Yeah, Pueblo's not the only one in this situation. The other municipality that really struggled with this, and I know because I was on the other side of things, managing these baselines in my, in my past life, I am the one who determined for the municipalities, whether we accepted it or not during my time at DOLA. And so the other one that's really in this situation is Greeley. And so we're not, we're not alone in this. DOLA knows that this is a problem. And so we're actually starting those conversations soon to figure out what the best way, what the best path forward is. So really quickly, before I turn this over to Chief of Staff McCain, because he's gonna talk a little bit more about this. As I mentioned, we have started those conversations with our friends up at DOLA. We, I have the baseline here just for reference. But if you look at the total number of units permitted, both market rate and affordable, annualizing this year, last year, and the year prior, we would be at nine hundred and nine. That is every unit that we've created, not just affordable housing. And these affordable housing units have to be deed-restricted, affordable housing. So this just shows how absolutely unattainable this goal is. And so we are looking at a legislative fix and I'll turn it over to you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Obviously, you've decided, or whomever's decided, that this complex is gonna go over on the east side. Is that right?
They've received the funding for it.
Okay, we don't want it on the east side. We have enough over there on the east side as it is. I've had a number of constituents contact me. And, and, and as a matter of fact, they'll fill this dais if they have to, okay? Why don't we think about some other areas like maybe the south side? Like maybe over by Bula Highway over there where the Ventana area is, where there's all kinds of ground. We don't want it. And I'll be, I'll be happy to go into, in detail when my constituents show up here, when, when it comes to the final vote. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Maestri? Okay.
Just to touch on this, this does take a legislative fix. This issue is impacting both Pueblo and Greeley. And I've been speaking with our lobbyist group. And what they suggested is after this session ends and they get out of this brutal gauntlet of everything going on in Denver, they want to sit down with both council and administration and be more proactive on legislation and kind of brainstorm and come up with some ideas for bills that we could propose that hopefully get carried by some of our legislators. This could possibly be one of them. If council wants to pick this up, I know that DOLA is supporting a legislative fix on this or advocating for one. Greeley, I believe it is, a representative from there. So once the session ends, I think maybe a work session or we could get together and kind of discuss this on some legislation that would be proactive to support Pueblo, including this and anything else that we could think of.
Okay. Counselor Maestri?
So the monies that we apply for and receive, we're actually having to delegate to a third party, correct? Like a developer, an organization? We don't build here at the city. So how, and these complexes and affordable housing has to be built. So do we, is it, does it, is, once we get the funding, we designated it to Passata or Neighborhood Works? Or where does that, who are, who's going to be the facilitator of those funds? The administrator of those funds?
Yeah, it's a great question. Generally, we actually won't receive the funding. So all that we're doing is opening up the door for Neighbor Works or Passata to go and directly apply for the funds. And so they are the applicant, they are the recipient. They just simply wouldn't be eligible to apply for those funds or that bucket of money, if you would, without us having opted in.
And where do we, does anybody know where the Neighborhood Works project is happening on the west side? Where it stands? Because it seems like since the old administration, it's changed administrations. And it's just kind of been sitting there kind of dormant. Do you have any updates on that? Or maybe we should get them into council and get an update on where they're headed? Because it just has been laying dormant there for a while. I haven't seen any, like, they sold one house and they put it in the paper. That was a year ago. You know, is there any more houses being sold? Are they gonna pave those streets that they've cut in the dirt? You know, what's going on? So maybe, do you know anything? You don't, so we probably should bring Neighbor Works in here.
That's fine.
And I could follow up too and get that information for you.
Yeah, we should probably see where all of our affordable housing partners are at with, you know, what they're bringing to the table or what they're looking for. Because we also had the development on the south side on Red Creek Springs Road for Passata that hasn't kicked off the ground. You know, what's going on with all of these different projects?
Yeah, and Counselor Maestri, I just wanted to clarify. We, we definitely stay in touch with all of these developers on a regular basis. I just, with the Neighbor Works project specifically, I know that they did have a few road bumps that they ran into that they were working through. And so I think it's a very fluid, very active situation. And so I, I don't want to say anything and misspeak. I would bring them in if you're curious. I mean, we can either reach out and get some information from them or it could be a really good work session because that's obviously a huge project coming to the city.
Yeah, because I noticed you put fuel and iron up in your, but when housing was here, they were saying that they only have four rent market, you know, I don't know what you want to call it, affordable housing units that they rent out of the twenty-eight, that all twenty-eight and housing pulled out of there as their management. So maybe according to keep being, because they took on public funds to build that, maybe they have to keep, but they only have like four units that are available. And then the rest are just regular market rate. That's what they had said here at the dais. I mean, it.
Yeah, I think most are, are affordable. I guess I can't speak to if it's all twenty-eight, but in these mixed-unit developments, generally, most, if not all, are affordable. It doesn't matter who manages them. I, I am aware that the Housing Authority was no longer managing them, but they have thirty-year-long use covenants on it that says that that unit, I mean, that it goes with the ground or in this case, in the condominiumized project, that you cannot have somebody in there that's over that percentage of the area median income. So regardless of who manages it, from the date that they signed that, they have thirty years.
But they believe that there was only four units that were still under that. So that's just something just to check out before we start touting that they are, you know, for, it's all affordable housing there.
Okay.
Counselor Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This was great, Melissa. So much information. I have so many questions, so I'm gonna hit you quickly because I know that you can handle it. For the max rent for the low-income rental side, does that include their utilities? Does that cost include utilities?
It does. So generally, there's a calculation that's done. It's very specific. You have to do a utility study that says if, if the owner pays for trash, water, and electric, then there's a utility allowance that's put in. And so, and if the resident pays, then their rent actually goes down dollar for dollar with that average amount is.
Okay. For the, like, I guess I'm assuming, I mean, this could be found via the census data. But how much of our population hits the sixty percent to eighty percent AMI?
I don't know the number, but it's high.
Okay.
You mean over sixty or under sixty?
It would be under sixty and then under eighty, or you would like between sixty and eighty, just to see who would qualify.
I don't know what the number is. I believe it's over half of our residents in the City of Pueblo. So it's, it's high.
And then I, so when you pull bid numbers for, so we have nine hundred market rate and affordable and units for the past three years, how many of that nine hundred was deemed affordable?
So we don't know yet because the Division of Housing just released their definitions of what is considered affordable and how to count units. And so we haven't gone back and done that actual number yet. Anecdotally, I can say less than a hundred because we've had, it would really just be the Housing Authority units that went online, which I think was two phases and they were about fifty units each.
For the Crawford one?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Yeah, so those would be the ones that were deed-restricted. Yeah, again, they, the Division of Housing just released those numbers. It was the whole unit count methodology, what exactly counts as a, a new unit. It's very complex. So that's part of that ninety-six thousand dollar grant that we received is to start working with Pueblo Regional Building Department and all across, you know, city departments to figure out exactly how to count them.
And if part of the goal or part of our stipulation is to review applications within ninety days, what is the current timeline for reviewing applications?
The way that the legislation is written, I think that we're actually fairly close. There might be a few small things that we need to tweak or a few things that we need to track better. But I do actually think that we're fairly close to meeting the legislative requirements. But again, that's part of that application or that, that grant that we applied for is to go through and assist us with creating any efficiencies with the process.
Like a whole audit?
Yeah.
So speaking of that legislative fix, which is very interesting, what would be the, like, what, what kind of proposed things would that bill be fixing? Would it be looking at the formula? Or I guess to that point, like, the, the process? What, what, what do you see being included in the bill?
So right now, in the bill, there is something called a rural resort petition. So for our rural resort communities, Vail, you know, our.
Eagle County.
Yes, are, are those communities that have a lot higher of incomes. They wanted to petition to be able to, essentially the opposite of what we're doing, change that so that they could tap into more funding and change the eligible uses of the funds. And so they wanted to be able to use ninety percent, a hundred percent, a hundred and ten percent of the area median income for rental, because that's the equivalent of forty, fifty, sixty in other areas. I think that we can use, and, and that was done through a legislative fix in 2023. And so I think that we can use that same methodology, but the other way and talk about high areas that have a high incidence of lower-income communities. How can we change that baseline to more accurately reflect what is actually needed? So I don't know exactly what it looks like, but it's gonna be the opposite of what we've, what was already done in 2023.
Interesting. I think that having a conversation after the, this legislative session ends is totally a good idea. And even talking with Greeley about, you know, their, because I, I think that the more communities on the bill, the better. So I'd like to certainly champion that and be a part of those conversations moving forward. I think that that's a great idea. My last question, tell me more about the land banking application process.
It's pretty intense. So it's, I mean, it's not just an application that you throw together quickly. We need to make sure that we have a well-thought-out project and partner, a great partnership. So what this does is it looks at land that you would actually acquire land. There are potentially funds to get it development-ready, but you would acquire land and you'd have a partner that would be ready to go to build affordable housing, rental housing specifically. So I had the, in the slides, the numbers, but it was something like, well, let's see if we can find it really quickly. Last year, there were sixty-one letters of intent that were submitted. So they start with a letter of intent and then they go back based on those and the projects they think are feasible are invited to apply. There were, so in total, there was a hundred and fifteen million dollars initially. Of those, they thought that seventy-three million dollars worth or thirty-three might be viable projects. And then there was, last year, there was forty-nine million dollars that was awarded. And so you can see that if there was seventy-three million dollars in viable projects and forty-nine million dollars is awarded, it's less competitive than one might think.
Right.
Still very competitive.
It has to be a public-private partnership for this one?
Yes, only local governments are eligible to apply. So nonprofits cannot apply for this. So we have to be at the table if we want this here in Pueblo. So working on those partnerships is key.
Okay, I appreciate all this information. I'll follow up with the legislative fix for Prop. 123 soon. Thank you.
Okay, and the, but in reference, excuse me, President.
Thank you for the information. That's a lot of good information. And just an observation that with all of the builders across the country, or just forget the country, in just Colorado, it's interesting that they don't flock to this and say, oh, wow, here's a bunch of government money that we can use to, to, to build stuff and we could potentially make a lot of money. I guess my, my question would be, these aren't very profitable, are they, for a builder?
No. Anytime that you have affordable housing, in order to have a really competitive application, you're generally talking about the nonprofit sector. And a very common thing in this industry is a deferred developer fee. It's a revenue source that comes back in and they're able to use that to help finance.
So quite frankly, you know, I understand what we want to accomplish, but it's very hard to accomplish that through a process that the people who build them really don't want to build them because they can't make any money on them. I wonder if we, if we, everything literally in, 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 no matter what you buy or sell, comes down to supply and demand. If you have great supply, demand is low, prices come down. So why wouldn't it be more advantageous to the community to aggressively, within ninety days, approve development plans, things like that on market-rate housing? When you create a stronger inventory of market-rate housing, it opens up the lower housing, which then becomes affordable to, to the people that we're trying to subsidize into housing. Just a thought, I'm, I'm just thinking out loud. I, I get what they're trying to do, but maybe if we, if, if we spent more resources on working the system the way that the system is designed, where market rate and the lower-priced units become available, then people have availability of lower-priced housing. You, you end up with people in houses that are affordable. Just interesting.
Counselor Flores?
I had a question about, I, I understand that one of the most successful housing programs includes an idea in which the land is not included in the value of, or the appraised value of the home because it's, it's treated separately within a trust. And that trust could be, you know, a nonprofit. I guess it could be a community, I don't know. So that if you have in my example, say, a house that you can sell for three hundred thousand and the land was seventy, as an example, after they've made all the improvements, that that land would not be included in that three, it wouldn't be amortized on a three hundred thousand dollar. that that land would not be included in that three, it wouldn't be amortized on a three hundred thousand dollar mortgage, but a two hundred and thirty thousand dollar mortgage because the homeowner will amortize the cost of the land over, I don't know, fifteen, twenty years, in which if they stay in that house that long, at some point, they're given the land, but it stays kind of like in a trust. In fact, I think it was Neighbor Works that made a presentation here about a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago, in which the whole, the template really was the elimination of the ground that was improved out of the mortgage payment, which brought the, obviously, the mortgage payment way down. Are you familiar with whether that kind of approach could be used with this kind of money through DOLA?
Yes, and the answer is absolutely yes. So you're referring to the land trust model. Yeah, it's very common. There's two main mechanisms. The land trust, which is where a third party owns the land, usually a nonprofit, and there's a ninety-nine-year land lease on it or a long-term land lease. And then there's the equity sharing model, which is what Neighbor Works was looking at using. Either way, are great ways to do it. The equity sharing model takes in each individual piece of property individually and has that essentially long-term use covenant, whereas the land lease is the whole area. But absolutely, partners great with the DOLA funds and those homeownership funds, which are up to seventy thousand dollars a door. So that's how you make these projects affordable. They may cost, let's say, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build the project or the unit that you want, or four hundred thousand dollars. You partner that with the equity that you would get from the Division of Housing, possibly down payment assistance also through Proposition 123, and all of a sudden, you have a homeownership opportunity that somebody making that lower eighty percent of the area median income can now afford.
Most cases, you know, especially a young couple that's buying their home for the first time, they're really looking at the payment. And of course, that doesn't help these days because our interest rates have gone up. But in a time of low interest rates and then not including, you know, the land, even though it's, they're getting a much nicer home, but at a lower monthly payment. So I like that idea. Thank you.
Councilor Martinez would be the last question because we're gonna have to move on, but go ahead, Councilor Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. President Aylott's point got me to thinking if there are ways that we could incentivize developers to build affordable housing. I know that in the past, when we're thinking about incentivizing projects or, you know, having some sort of cost reduction, we've waived city sales tax on construction materials. Just, I just, I think that maybe we should think a little bit more about how to incentivize specifically builders if we're gonna meet that goal. I don't know. What are your thoughts, Melissa?
I think it's a great idea. I think it's a much larger conversation, and I can tell you that it's something we're already actively working on. In fact, last week at council, there was a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar incentivization for the Compass Point Apartments that was passed. And it was, you know, waiving fees. And so there's a lot of different ways that we can approach this, but it is something that we're looking at of how do we do this on every level that is the least impactful for the city in order to help developers come.
Right. I know that that's something that other communities are doing, but also, you know, with the fiscal situation that we're in, just being mindful of that. So I'm glad that you guys are on it.
Administrator Cook, does that conclude your summary as well?
Yes.
Okay, does any, I think we're, I think we're good?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, item agenda C is wholesome CPF update. Justin Kurth, Wholesome Community Relations. And I'd like to know what CPF stands for, maybe somebody else can. Oh, okay. Take that back. Just a wholesome update. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. Good evening, council members. My name's Justin Kurth. I work, as the chair said, for Wholesome U.S. as their Public Affairs and Community Relations Manager at the Portland Plant. First, before I get started, I want to recognize a few joining us this evening from United Steelworkers, fourteen, four eighty-two, President Mike Buffmac, and Financial Secretary John Telk, join us from the Portland Plant as well. And then I'd like to start off also by sharing a little bit about myself. I'm a veteran and a family man and a, I call myself a son of the plains, right? I'm from both Nebraska and Colorado, and my wife and I have, we brought our kids up in Penrose, and I'm also grateful to call myself an alum of CSU Pueblo, there where I earned my Bachelor of Science in Political Science. The university also saw fit to send me to be a fellow at the Center for the Study of the Presidency in Congress, their first presidential fellow. And then my wife and I enjoy bringing our family to Pueblo quite often with, you know, opportunities to shop, to watch movies, go to the River Walk. And we have some friends that have lived in Bessemer off and on, so we've enjoyed coming down for that. And then while I, my service, my public service is extended to time in the United States Marine Corps. It's also extended to time serving as a senior staffer for a member of Congress, most recently, until I find myself here working for wholesome as their newest relations, community relations manager. And then, as I mentioned, I work at the plant east of Florence, which is soon to celebrate its one hundred thirtieth anniversary as an operating plant since the late eighteen hundreds. It's one of forty-four facilities that Wholesome U.S. has in Colorado, which accounts for approximately ten percent of the entire American facilities right here in our state. You might have heard the plant referred to as the Portland Plant. That's because of a type of cement that is manufactured there and a community which became the namesake, a community that sprouted up east of Florence back in the late, or sorry, the early nineteen hundreds. So that wholesome can continue to operate for another century or more, we are seeking community support for an application to the U.S. Department of Energy's grant funding for carbon capture. This would employ around twelve hundred construction workers for three years and bringing economic benefits to the region while reducing emissions. And it's a project for which we're grateful to say that the Greater Pueblo Chamber has indicated it will provide support by way of a letter of support. Wholesome U.S. serves markets in Colorado, Wyoming, New Mexico, Nebraska, Utah, and it's employed, of course, multiple members of our communities here in Fremont and Pueblo Counties, but also in El Paso Counties. And during much of this time, in both construction and operation, right? So it's not, it's not just today, it's not just now, but in all the span of those builds, those, and the ongoing operation of that facility east of Florence. Today, that number includes nearly two hundred employees. And so you'll see that's an updated number on the fact, from the fact sheet that I provided earlier, and some of whom call Pueblo home. Wholesome Cement has long been proven a portion of the, rather a reliable component of the American infrastructure builds, including things like DIA, portions of I-25, commercial and residential solutions and others, while also reducing emissions, which come from two points in the process, the manufacturing process for cement, the energy source, which heats the kiln, and the carbon released from the heated limestone. Wholesome U.S. has also partnered with the Colorado School of Mines on technical expertise in carbon capture. And the company is planning on to partner with CSU Pueblo to conduct an economic impact study that would also seek, rather, there's also a pursuit to expand operations within Pueblo County by way of a quarry unrelated to the CC, the carbon capture project. So wholesome U.S. is asking for a letter of support for a grant, this grant application, to take this big first step forward together to support the region's economic growth into the future. And I did want to thank you again for your time and leave time, of course, for questions if you have any.
Questions, comments from council? Council, excuse me, Flores?
Describe to us what kind of modifications and what the construction would look like going forward. And specifically, you're asking for support just for this plant or for this kind of program for the, all of your plants nationwide?
The support we'd be speaking is strictly, you know, for this plant here in east of Florence. And the construction you're talking about, the characteristics of what that would look like, I would need to dig into some, some technical expertise brain for that. I'd need to tap into some other expertise on that as to what engineering feat that would, you know, what would the plant look like differently? I wish I could allude to that, but the important part about the ask here today is that this is step one in a process that gains, you know, helps us gain access to Department of Energy funds so that we can move forward. And, you know, without that, we're not, we're not as competitive as we could be with the, you know, the other states around the nation, which could be, you know, which are pursuing these same opportunities.
You know, one of the, one of the statistics that many people don't know is that CFNI here is the largest recycler of scrap metal. So we're really the largest in that area, but I see your plant also not only making yourself, you know, a greener kind of cement plant, but also being involved in the elimination of the products that you use to heat your kiln. And that's, you know, elimination of so many tires that we have, and maybe even old railroad ties. I know that those are kind of utilized in that business.
Indeed, yes.
But so you're obviously doing two things, you know, being a facility that will eliminate a lot of this stuff that we just, you know, toss to the landfill. And so I, you know, you would have my support for, you know, some sort of a letter, you know, allowing you to move forward.
Well, thank you, Councilor.
Thank you.
Councilor Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Kurth, when you're talking about those twelve hundred jobs, how can this city partner with wholesome to make sure that they're filled with Puebloans?
So what wholesome is doing right now is we're, we already have our, some of our HR professionals showing up to to community job fairs, including with Pueblo's Community College, and I think there's a pursuit to build a relationship there with CSU Pueblo as well. But we would look to expand any opportunities we could in recruitment and workforce development in this region for the purpose of making sure that Puebloans are the ones contributing to the effort as well.
Yeah, I mean, that would be great, especially as the depot is shutting down and we have a bunch of workforce that could potentially be out of jobs. It seems like a great opportunity to see how we can capture those Puebloans, you know, at another, you know, labor-loving job.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, and I'll look to follow up with our HR folks to learn more about what those efforts are.
Great.
Thank you.
And thanks, guys, for being here.
Councilor Mastry, please.
And so this way, for grant funding, correct, is what you're trying to get in your upgrades here? I think that, you know, sometimes grant funding comes with certain things, okay? And so I think that as long as our legal department takes a look at it and, you know, okay's it, they can, we can agree on maybe doing something that supports you to bring more jobs to this community. Because that would be the only, it's not, I mean, it doesn't hurt to offer a letter of support, but if the grant funding includes something, a need from the city or something other than that, we need to know that we're free from not having to, you know, put money in that we may not have, or really what those terms mean. I mean, we see a lot of grant funding that has little loopholes required behind it, and I'm sure that as long as our legal team checks that out and makes sure that we're free from nothing other than offering a letter, I think we would love to offer a letter that helps you continue to thrive out there at wholesome.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Kurth, anybody else? I believe, we're good? Okay, Mr. Kurth, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next up, item, and God, we're back on schedule. Look at that. We're gonna have Melissa Cook again because she's that good. And she's gonna be doing the CDBG twenty twenty-five recommendations.
Good evening again. I think this one should be a lot quicker, so.
Okay, good. We're good.
Okay. So we are here today to talk about our twenty twenty-five HUD allocation plan. It's CDBG recommendations as well as our home housing partnership recommendations. There we go. Okay. So every year, this is probably review for everyone, but every year, the city of Pueblo does receive an allocation of federal funding that is formula funds from the federal government. There's two different types, the Community Development Block Grant or CDBG, and the Home Investment Partnership. Home does not stand for anything, but that is just the name. We go through a process every year and every five years. So we have an extensive public process in trying to get recommendations and stakeholder-ing of how to spend these funds. So annually, we have public meetings. Those will be coming up for this twenty twenty-five HUD action plan. We do strategic planning every five years, which we've been going through over the last few months, and our five-year strategic plan is due to HUD here in just a few months. Additionally, we have a citizen advisory committee. It's very similar to like the CSAC Commission. This is something that is required by HUD that we do have a citizen advisory committee, and we ask them to weigh in on recommendations of how to spend certain pieces of our federal CDBG grant funds. And so just a little bit of historical numbers. Every year, we receive funds about, on average, one point five million dollars for CDBG and about, on average, nine hundred and six thousand dollars in home. That excludes our home grant match, which we'll talk about here in a second. So those are just the funds that are coming from the federal government each year. Let's talk about the timeline because the timeline is really strange on this. I'm sure that there's already a question going through your minds of, it is well into twenty twenty-five. Why are we just now talking about these? And really, this has to do with HUD and the way that HUD's formula allocations come out. So as I've mentioned in the past, the CDBG funds have a really long planning period. And so we are, we actually just accepted our opened applications, May first, for the twenty twenty-six funding that we won't receive until the end of twenty twenty-six, close to twenty twenty-seven. And so there's a really long planning process here. So for the funds that we're talking about today, we open those applications out to the public, May first of twenty twenty-four. At that point, we did not know what the allocation would be. We still don't know what the actual HUD allocation will be. So we are estimating, we use the previous year's allocation, and we have different strategies of how we will deal with that if it's lower or higher, and we've seen both. So from July first, twenty twenty-four through September first of twenty twenty-four, the citizen advisory committee was reviewing all of these applications, met several times, including had some presentations done by the applicants, and ultimately decided to recommend some awards to our office. On May fifth, well, obviously, I'm here tonight presenting to you all, and then looking forward, at some point between June and July, HUD will announce their allocations. We'll actually know exactly how much we're going to be receiving. At that point, we will then draft an ordinance based on the recommendations tonight and kind of those contingency plans that we have. So if the amount that they say we are going to receive in allocation funds is lower, then we have certain ones that we will reduce by that percentage. If it's higher, then we have certain ones that we will increase by the percentage, and that was all done through the citizen advisory committee, through that stakeholding process, based on what their recommendations were. That ordinance will be presented to you all with the final presentation of our five-year consolidated plan, which we've been going through that planning process over the last several months. August fifteenth, on or about, it actually changes based on the HUD federal year. That is the last day that we can submit to HUD. If we miss that deadline, we do not receive our funding. And so this is why we have to bring this information to you, not knowing the final allocation, because from the time that we've received the final allocation or that final number from HUD, there is always a chance that we won't have time to get through first reading, second reading, and submit that to HUD on time. And we are not going to risk losing, you know, millions of dollars for that. So we want to bring it to you. In, historically, it has been very close to what we have received and what we've estimated. I don't anticipate that this year will be much different, to be completely honest. So we will see what that looks like, and if it's a substantial change, we will, we will make those adjustments. And then we will finally receive that funding in September or October of twenty twenty-five of this year and be able to start spending it. One thing that I will note is because of this timeline, it has to do with the way that our fiscal year falls. Our fiscal year with HUD, which is different than the city's fiscal year. So our calendar year with HUD, the way that the HUD funding falls, we can solve that by changing our fiscal year date with HUD, and we have made that that request. And so if we change it to what it is now, which is March 1st through February 28th to a October 1st to September 30th, that fixes all of this. Next year, you'll be able to operate, be able to bring to you actual amounts and what the Citizen Advisory Commission or Committee suggested or advised, rather than having those estimated amounts. So it is something that we're fixing, but just so that you understand the timeline and why this has such a long lead time to it. So as I mentioned, the Citizen Advisory Committee, they get together, they review the applications. The applicants are actually presented an opportunity to do questions and answers and present to the commission. There are a lot of different application review considerations. We have to consider federal guidelines. We have to consider our own priorities. We have to ensure that it's in a low to moderate income area. We can only spend these dollars in those areas that are low and moderate income. And we also look at the total impact of whatever the application is versus, you know, the outcomes. And so here's what we are actually recommending. For the CDBG, we are able to spend up to 15% in public services. These are essentially our nonprofits that serve our community. So there was $213,750 available. And these are the different organizations that we are proposing funding, SRDA, Catholic Charities, and two different programs for Pissata. We are also proposing spending 900 or or recommending $926,250 in a variety of different public facilities and housing activities. So we have three different residential rehabilitation programs, two of them run by the city, one of them by the county. We are looking at spending $300,000 on a topic that we've all spent quite a bit on lately, which is the abatement of dangerous buildings. That would go to our own Public Works Department. We did have a few residents, actually. And this is the really cool thing about this program is you can have residents. This is open to the public. Come to the city and say, I have a sidewalk. My neighbor maybe or myself is in need of ADA accessibility. Can you help me fix the sidewalk issues on my specific street? So we had two of those that we were recommended to be funding funded at the 1,500 block of East Route and the 200 block of Van Buren. And then additionally, you've heard the mayor speak previously about looking at non-congregate sheltering funding. And that was recommended as well. And so now, just moving on to the home investment partnership funding, this is not run through the Citizen Advisory Committee. It is not a requirement to be run through the Citizen Advisory Committee. So we generally fund a lot of the similar different type programs. So we estimate that the funds that we'll be receiving from the federal government are $880,000. This is actually a consortium. It's a city-county partnership. And so those funds come into the city and the county. The city then is, the city takes the lead on the consortium and subgrants essentially those funds to the county, 13% of the funds. There is a match required for this. So you may recall that when we are doing budgets, there's a capital improvement line item. This year, it was for $200,000 in the 2025 budget that was allocated as the grant match for this. If there is any extra, then that will just go back to the general fund and we'll wait and see what the amount that we do receive from the federal government is to see if there is extra funding that would be returned. The eligible activities for the home program, they benefit those that are at 60% of the area median income or less through new construction or rental residential rehabilitation of rental units. You can also assist with tenant-based rental assistance and assist with purchasing or assistance for a single-family home construction, which has that different higher area median income requirement. So you can see what we're looking at doing. Of course, we have some city administration dollars to pay for the salaries of the Housing Department, county administration dollars. We are looking at funding a community housing development organization. What that is, that is, it's also known as CHODO in our world. Organizations, nonprofits locally that develop housing can apply for salaries essentially to then help with their development activities. So we'll be opening applications for that. And then when we talk about city programs and the city match, those are generally reserved for some of our larger apartment housing complexes that come in or our larger projects. So this pot of funding in the past has funded the Housing Authority for their different projects of re, you know, knocking down and rebuilding the Sangre de Cristo apartments. We talked earlier about fuel and iron, home dollars were used there. So traditionally, that's where these dollars are used. I just wanted to say thank you to our Citizen Advisory Committee. They they serve on this, volunteer their time in order to help us find the best applicant applications to fund throughout the city. So thank you to everyone who assists there. And I believe that's it.
Okay, any other questions or comments from Council?
Melissa, you said on those first two slides when we were talking about what where the money was allocated to, you said those are suggestions, they haven't been set in stone yet? Or suggestions by your your department to the Citizens Advisory Committee? Or those have already been decided?
Nothing's decided until the ordinance comes before you all. So that's why we wanted to do this quick presentation, let you know that this ordinance was coming. The Citizen Advisory Committee recommended these dollars to be funded. That is a recommendation. It does not, traditionally, we do follow those. It's similar to CSAC. CSAC makes their recommendations through a well-vetted process just like this. And so we do not have to accept those recommendations. But the process is there so that we at least consider it.
So the 300,000 that we have towards demolition of the housing out there, we have, what is on our list, 1.3 million?
In need of demolition? So when we did our list, it was about 60 units. Since then, we've added two units to it. And it costs about $100,000 to demolish. And so we think it's closer to 6.2 million. You could probably find some efficiencies if you had a very large contract. And so it might be a little bit less than that. But I get what you're saying. And it's going to be very difficult to use the CDBG funds to cure this problem in its entirety. The other thing, if you don't mind, because I think I know what you're getting at, is well, why don't we use the whole $1.5 million and put it towards this problem for five years? And we're we're solved, right?
Because you can only do a percentage.
You can only do a percentage. So a percent, a percentage of the funds can go to, only a percentage of the funds can go to benefit that do not have a direct benefit to a low to moderate income household. Because the City of Pueblo does not own these homes and are not immediately rebuilding on them, we can only use a percentage.
And could you please provide Council via email with the previous years and how much of the CBDG grant funding was allocated towards the demolition of homes?
I'd be happy to do that. I can tell you that this year is a very large amount. I can't say for sure that it's the largest amount that we've done in recent history, but it is a very large amount.
Okay, just so that they have an idea, we have an idea of what we spend in the past. Okay.
Okay. President Aleph.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. Couple of questions. On one of the first for homeless services, Pissata had two. I mean, have we, obviously, we don't see applications and who's, are they the only ones that applied for those programs?
They were not, and I did bring that information. We had two. I'm sorry. Yeah, we had two that were not, we had three that were not funded. So there was a third application also by Pissata for $50,000. There was an application provided by Public Operator of Care for $114,800 that was not funded and an application from the Pueblo Rescue Mission, which at this point is not applicable, but it was not funded either.
And reasons why the other ones weren't? I mean, we don't see the reasons either why somebody was given the money and the others weren't.
Yeah. I'm happy to bring that. There's a, there's an entire scorecard. Obviously, I was not involved in these meetings when they did happen, but they did not, you know, score high enough on the scorecard. We have the actual scores here that ranged from 71 to 90 for the ones that were not funded. And the other ones were well over 90, well over 90 and higher.
That got funded.
That got funded.
Got it. The second one was on the non-congregate shelters. I haven't heard any presentation on that. Maybe the Chief of Staff would like to tell us what are non-congregate shelters?
I can, yeah. So non-congregate shelters are, what we are looking at is putting eight units at the Pueblo Shelter site. The Pueblo Shelter is a congregate shelter. So everyone, you know, is staying in the same room. Non-congregate is essentially just individual spaces where somebody can go if they have special needs, if they're homeless youth, if there's a reason that they need a door that maybe locks behind them or if they have a disability and are in need of that. So these non-congregate shelters that we're looking at, you know, what might ring a bell and what the mayor has been referring to them as as pallet shelters, pallet's a brand. So you may have heard that before. And I know that that the pallet brand did come and do a presentation. It might have been before you were on Council, President Aleph. So it's been a while. And so again, because of the long lead time, there's, there's been a lot of conversations about this. But yeah, the city is looking at you at providing eight of those at the shelter.
Okay, so it was 240,000, 214,000?
214.
214,000. So the shelter hasn't been full in two years, but we're going to build additional units. I guess that's a big question to me, and I don't know how it goes through the process. But I mean, maybe they could could block off a portion of the shelter that's never used and use that as non-congregate piece of the shelter rather than spend $250,000 to put in eight units. And I get, I get it, it's coming from the government or whatever, but if you could use it for, I don't know if that money can be used for rehabilitation of these units that are that are, that need to be rehabilitated or or tore down or whatever. And I'm just throwing that out there. I have no idea. It's, it's just, every year, we get the CDBG requests and 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 the report. And it's one of those deals where we're literally, at least I feel this way. I feel that we're completely in the dark in the process. We're completely in the dark about who applied, who didn't apply. And we're pretty much up against the wall because you don't want to lose the funds. So we're going to get an ordinance in front of us that has all of these, these recommendations. And we had very little input other than something like this right now of saying, I questioned that. I'm not saying that it's not right, I just question it. So I wonder if that process can be more transparent to Council to where we we get a little more information than here's what we're choosing. But we don't get why? Why is that getting chosen over this? And why? And I get the score report, but how do, how are they scored? We don't know how they're scored. We don't know anything. So that's my concern.
Yeah, and President Aleph, I'm happy, you know, I'm more than happy to provide you with those scorecards. I mean, and maybe we can follow up via email after this. And I agree with you that because of the long lead time, it's it's kind of a struggle. We need to fix our calendar year. Because what has happened in the years past, and that you all may remember this, this last August, is this came before you, but it was presented because of the long lead time to the previous Council. And so a lot of you didn't have those presentations. So we intentionally waited this time to make sure that it was going to be fresh, you know, when we, when the ordinance does come up and it's not six months later. So I hear you and we're happy to do this however you want. If there's, you know, consensus on Council or if you want additional information, I am more than happy to change this process for next year and bring it however makes the most sense.
Okay. Counselor Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess, you know, and I don't, I don't have an issue with transparency, but I also want to acknowledge the fact that this committee has put in a lot of hours of hard work making the decisions. So while Council can have, you know, a better explanation of these funds, I don't want to take away the citizenry input, which is mandated by HUD, right? Like, like they're, they're the ones who are doing the work. They're the deciding, you know, the advisory committee, the deciding factor. So I don't want it to come to a situation where it's like, oh, Council's saying, you know, great work, but we're going to do this other thing. So for this advisory committee, which is, it's mandated by HUD, can you remind me, Melissa, do we appoint those folks?
So we do, we do in the Housing and Citizen Services Office.
So if, are they tenured at all? Like, if someone wants to apply, how do they apply?
So starting probably in a week or two, it will actually be part of the boards and commissions, and the application will be on there. We actually have a public process where we're changing the, what are the equivalent of bylaws right now? I think the last day for public comment is tomorrow or the next day. And so it's interesting that you asked that because we are changing some of this. We're making it make a little bit more sense. We're adding at large positions, trying to make sure that we have a lot more robust input from this board and so, or from this committee. And so, yeah, starting here in just a few weeks, we're hopeful that it'll be done through the mayor's office. Now, that doesn't, I, that doesn't mean that the mayor's office is going to appoint, but the applications will come in through the normal boards and commission applications.
Great. Thank you, Melissa.
Okay, I think that'll wrap it up. Thank you, Melissa Cook. Appreciate it very much. Okay, next up, item agenda E, City Council Board and Commissions Update. City Council, 15-minute presentation. Okay, we ready? Okay.
So thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the committees that I sit on is the Latino Chamber Board of Directors, representing the city on that board. The Latino Chamber Foundation is actually hosting this Friday their 20th Annual Joe T. Ulibari Event, which is going to recognize, it's like a tostada. So it's a roast, but because it's the Latino Chamber Foundation, it's a tostada. And it's going to be this Friday evening, and they're going to be on your honoring the great Yanera Macaulay Sadio. I believe Counselor Flores is one of the roaster toasters who will get the honor of roasting Miss Yanera. So congratulations to Miss Yanera. She does so much good for our community. This is a very well-deserved recognition for Miss Yanera. So congrats to her. That's all I have.
Okay, Counsel Flores.
I I serve as the ex officio on the Pueblo Urban Renewal Authority, along with Brett Boston, who is the voting City Councilman on that board. And we did elect new officers. And our new president of the board for Pueblo Urban Renewal is Dr. Jim Valenzuela. And I'm trying to remember, Chris DeLuca, I think, is treasurer. Do you remember who vice president is? Who? Jeanette Garcia is our vice president. So I wanted to announce that. I do serve on the Finance Committee meeting. They just got their final annual report. And if anybody's ever looked at urban renewals, financials, it is, it's unbelievable because there's, there's so many different projects going on. It's a very complex 500-page document of financials. And I'm happy to report that they got a clean audit from the auditor that they did their book. So that was, that was a good deal. I'm also on the Front Range Passenger Rail District. We're in the process right now of formulating some of our final consulting reports. There is still that overall goal of getting rail from Ford Collins to Trinidad coming through Pueblo. However, it's probably going to be broken up into two sections, and that's Ford Collins to Denver and then Denver to to Pueblo and then on to Trinidad. So we're working on that. We're still on target to put this before the Colorado voters in November of 2026. This is a, going to be a huge project in the billions so that it's going to take a lot more work moving forward. Let's see what, I'm also on the Petco Board. And that, you'll be hearing a lot more about the ballot issue that will go on in November. There's discussion right now about whether or not the ballot question will be changed and whether or not our criteria ordinance might be, might be changed in some fashion, tweaked here or there. might be, uh, might be changed in some fashion, tweaked here or there. And so you're going to be hearing a lot more over the next couple of months, uh, regarding how that ballot issue will finally, um, come forth and whether or not there'll be any significant changes. Uh, and that is the vote that will take place for the citizens that have been giving, uh, money, uh, in the Habsen Sales Tax, uh, to incentivize businesses to, to come into Pueblo. So there's a lot more to be, be said about that. I think that's about all I have.
Counselor Main Street.
Um, I'm on the, uh, Pueblo Regional Building Department Board. And, um, they took, um, hired a new leader. Um, it's been almost two years now, um, and they continue to try to improve the process, um, build relationships with the community and the contractors. And so, um, every time I, I, I think, I don't know that it, I think the last board meeting I had was a day after we talked about the last, um, what goes on, what went on there. And they had another seminar again with, um, local contractors, um, just trying to improve the process. They're, they're getting to know their community and trying to, like I said, build relationships and so forth to make the process easier for our community. And so that, that's been their main focus.
Okay, President Neil. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm on the HARP Board for the Riverwalk. Uh, the boathouse is coming along. Great. No major problems. Uh, hopefully by this fall, early winter, uh, that'll be complete and we'll, we'll get to enjoy that amenity. I believe the boats are running now. So if you want to, uh, go down and enjoy the Riverwalk, uh, grab a boat and a beer and head on down and enjoy all of the amenities of the restaurants, the bars, everything down on the Riverwalk. Uh, I'm also on Petco with Counselor Flores and he summed that up pretty good. I'm on the Fountain Creek Watershed District Board. Uh, they're very much involved down here in the city of Pueblo. They just did a major cleanup along the Fountain Creek. Uh, they've done some work up on, off of Eagle Ridge to help with diversion. And, uh, they're working very hard all the way from the mountains of the, the foot of Pike's Peak all the way to Pueblo on that, uh, along that Fountain River. That is a very volatile river if, for anybody who's, who sees that thi- this time of year, when you get two, three inches of rain, uh, that river can change direction and, and tear stuff up. It's just, it's just very volatile. So it takes a lot of work by that group to, uh, to keep that under control and they do a great job of it. If you have any questions or concerns about what's happening along Fountain Creek, please reach out to us because, uh, we want to know. Along with all the city councillors, we're all on the, uh, Pueblo Area Council of Governments. That board is, has been looking at some very interesting, uh, happenings within the city of Pueblo, along Pueblo Boulevard, looking at ways to, to make it, uh, more affordable and, and easier for developers to come in and, and build their businesses when it comes to right of ways off of the state. Pueblo Boulevard is a state highway. If not, everybody knows that. And so anything that gets done, done along that road, obviously they have to go through, uh, CDOT and CDOT, talks to and collaborates with the Pueblo Area Council of Governments. So that's about it for what I got going on. Counselor Boston. I'm going to read for Counselor Boston. He went to Las Vegas this weekend and, uh, he can't talk. We don't know why, but he can't talk. So we're going to talk about PURA. Uh, purchased, uh, two new properties to demolish and build duplexes on. So that's fantastic news. Especially because we're talking about affordable housing and urban renewal is literally the tool that we can use as a city to, to make a lot of that happen. Approved studies to be completed at CSUP project site, uh, to move that PURA district closer to becoming a reality. I think, uh, we all heard about that, uh, through the presentation from Mr. Ortiz and the, and CSU Pueblo and what they're planning to do up there. And I, and, uh, PURA is moving forward with a BLYT study to turn that into an urban renewal district. Planning and zoning for Mr. Boston. They approved the rezoning of two areas for large mixed housing complexes. And one also includes office space. They renamed a few roads and received a signed plan for the boathouse on the Riverwalk. It, it almost looked like Goat House and I didn't know where the Goat House was.
It's on Go heel.
It is, uh, uh, and on the HARP Foundation, they approved signed plans for the boathouse and, uh, furnishing plans and almost at the fundraising goals for this year. So fantastic. Good work. And that's it for Counselor Boston. Counselor, oh, and Counselor Boston also wanted to say that we have a celebrity up here on the dais. Uh, today, uh, Counselor Martinez did win the Golden Tortilla. Is that what it's called? The Golden Tortilla. She made the best tortilla in Pueblo and she should definitely be recognized for that. And, uh, maybe you can bring us a dozen or two next week so we can test and make sure. Good job. Way to represent. Way to represent.
Counselor Latino. Um, just, um, the airport board, we're working on addressing the, the cracks in the runway. They're being addressed right now and a lot of work is being done. We know there's a lot of potential for this airport in terms of, uh, private enterprise. Uh, we've had some communication with people from the northern part of the state that are wanting to come down here. Um, because there's availability and, and space. We're going to meet with Mr. Carson from the, uh, and, and at the national level as relates to the gross grocery store on the east side. We're moving right along with that project. And, um, I guess that's pretty much it.
Okay, I'll, I'll conclude with mine. Um, several things I'm working on. I have a little bit more time than a lot of folks on council. It'd be a fact that I'm kind of retired, so I got a lot of time to do some program development stuff, which I have a background in. Um, I'm still working on a STOP program, the sharing team oriented, police and public and private. And I'm working that through law enforcement and I'm also working with the Bessemer Safety Plan through, uh, the security firms as well as urban renewal. And that plan will be looking at how we can, uh, make places safer in Bessemer, uh, starting it as a pilot program, then work over to the east side. That's, we're still working on that right now. Also DIRTT, which is the Demolition Infill Redevelopment Task Force, where we're looking at the same kind of things that the city's trying to get to now. And we're going to try to keep on, and I'm working again through the urban renewal on that. Um, also another thing that I'm trying to get done is a lot of the complaints I get is, oh, this council is sponsoring all these dinners and you don't show up in attendance. And I'm probably the biggest violator of that. But I'm trying to figure out a way that we can get some young people to get, and maybe we can sponsor them with us. And if you have people you could bring or look at a way, maybe somebody from the city, uh, from the school counselor, council, uh, when their little dais that they have there, bring them and get them involved. And it's called FLAG. Future leaders achieving, uh, greatness. So we can get them involved with counselors. We need incentive. There's four different high schools you can work with and we can get them to go to the dinners with us. I think that would be a great move, but I'll bring that forward at another time. Um, also I've got the, I'm working on an articulated substation plan with Joe and we're going to look at different areas that we can bring forward for, for a work session. And I'll talk more about that. Then we've got the council contingency screening and accountability. And what we're trying to do there is I've, and I've talked with some great people already from Tracy Sample, um, to, um, all different kinds of folks in between that we're looking at these plans where we'll be able to, when funding comes to us, to be considered. If we're crossing all our Ts, uh, dotting all our, because I don't, I didn't know much about the process and I'm going along, I'm realizing we have a great administrative assistant that can help us with some of this initial screening, which is a little different than CSAC, okay? That it's, I don't want to have terminology I can use, but, and when you go through CSACs, it's a very difficult process. And sometimes any other process is a little easier. So we're going to try to make sure when nothing's getting, going through the loopholes and we're answering all the questions. Uh, next thing I've got is the, um, what was the last one? Hold on one second. Oh yeah. Also in reference to when I'm doing the work session, um, the work session is real important to me because the way I take a look at it, just so you know, is this is not my work session. This is not my agenda. And I don't think it should be utilized that way. If I have somebody that's got a different viewpoint and I don't wait, their ideology is way to the left or to the right, they need to be able to come forward, sit in front of this council and put out there what their goals are or what kind of credentials they have that they can, I don't care what planet they come from. I don't ca- it's got to be where they can come out here and address it. And both sides can be looked at by this council equally, regardless if it's on your agenda or not. So in reference to that, I put a lot of work into getting that done. But other than that, that's all I got. Anything else?
Chair Gomez, I move that we go into executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal. Under CRS, section twenty four dash six dash four oh two, parent four, parent B, and the following additional details are provided for identification purposes. Section eleven dash one dash two oh two of the Pueblo Municipal Code, uh, loitering. Can we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Are those in favor? Those opposed?
Thank you.